Yes, it's on.
Good evening and welcome to our regular Kingsburg City Council Agenda meeting. Tonight is Wednesday, August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Our council chambers are open at one hundred percent capacity tonight for the public. Tonight, our invocation will be given by Pastor Mark Thompson from the First Baptist Church, and we will follow his invocation by ten parts of words. Any just please write.
Heavenly Father, we come to you humbly, and as we pray numbers six, we do it in the spirit that you commanded, Aaron, to pray over the people of Israel. So we pray this over Kingsburg together. May the Lord bless you and protect you. May the Lord smile on you and be gracious to you. May the Lord show you his favor and give you his peace. And whenever Aaron and his sons bless the people of Israel, in my name, I myself will bless them. God, we ask the same blessing over the city of Kingsburg. We pray for all the council members tonight and every party that has taken place in leadership, that we place ourselves under your rightful authority. We look to you for guidance, and we submit our will for the best interests of the city of Kingsburg, and we ask this in the name of Jesus. Amen?
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every dignity and justice in the world.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to move to order. Madam clerk, please move to the left. Item number five.
Here.
Item number six.
Here.
Item number seven.
Here.
Item number eight.
Here.
Here, thank you. Item number two is to approve our agenda. I will need a motion for that.
Make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. I agree, one of our favorite things to do. I understand that we have one of the two honorees here tonight. And tonight, we are honoring Fer Yang and Darius Rodriguez. Fer could not be here tonight, and I will ask Archie to accept this in his place tonight. In spring of two thousand and twenty-two, he is being recognized for organization improvement, improvement award recipient as a firefighter EMT. If I can give this to you to pass on our congratulations to you.
Thank you very much.
And I believe Darius just was able to come from the ambulance call. Come on in, come on up. Wherever you want. Tonight, we have Darius Rodriguez, and in spring of two thousand and twenty-two, he was a public service award recipient, and tonight, we are honoring him. I have something to read for you. We are offering our congratulations on your nomination and award for the employee recognition program of the city of Kingsburg. Kingsburg is a wonderful community that is maintained through the hard work of citizens, volunteers, and employees. Please, please accept congratulations from the city council. We sincerely thank you for the hard work in keeping our community a place of work and play. Having dedicated individuals such as yourself gives Kingsburg an invaluable asset, especially when it involves the quality of life for our residents and visitors. You are nominated for your dedication to the health and safety to the citizens of Kingsburg and the Kingsburg Fire Department. You must have been instrumental in teaching multiple CPR courses to the public at different events. You led efforts to implement the Pulse Point Program and had seven AEDs installed in strategic locations around the city. You have also provided necessary training to the newly formed CERT team. We know you provide excellent service daily with the fire department, and your commitment and dedication to the health and safety of our citizens shows the character you bring to the city every day. Thank you. Thank you. Item number four is public comments. This is the time for any citizen to come forward and address the city council on any issue within its jurisdiction that is not listed on the agenda. A maximum of five minutes is allowed for each speaker. Tonight, do we have anyone from the public that would like to make a comment? For any items that are not on the agenda, we have a five-minute limit, and we are not allowed to respond at the council. We're starting in the back, anyone in the back? Second row from the back? Third row from the back? Third row from the front?
Sure.
Okay, come on up.
Thank you. My name is David Silva. Ms. North, thank you for being the mayor and for having this meeting. City council members and staff, I appreciate the opportunity to talk to everyone today. It looks like by the grace of God and by some great people that believe in me, I made the council ballot for District One. And so I'm here tonight to speak to you all and to speak to the citizens of the District One, some of which I know, some of which I don't know, and the citizens of the entire town. And so I couldn't possibly share everything there is to know about me in a five-minute window. I realize that. But I would like to share a little bit of a bio about me and how I ended up here. Wasn't born and raised here. I call myself a transplant. Was born actually in Santa Maria, California, grew up in Arroyo Grande, California. Went to Arroyo Grande High School. I went to grade school at Saint Patrick's. I was born in a religious Catholic household. Went to school and studied agriculture. Found myself going to West Hills College in Kalinga, of all places. Studied agriculture there, transferred back to San Luis Obispo, Cal Poly, studied agriculture there. Found myself here in Kingsburg doing agriculture. And so that was in nineteen ninety-three. Lived in another town for a short stint. Looked around, and I was like, where would I like to live? Where would I like to raise a family? Guess where it came up? Kingsburg. Moved here in nineteen ninety-seven, bought my first house, starter home. Live there to this day. I still live in my thirteen-hundred-square-foot home in District One, and I love it. Love the people in District One. A lot of us are transplants. Some of us are not transplants, but we have a nice mix and a nice community in District One within the city. I also have overwhelming support from people outside that I've made contacts with over the years, that I've either coached with or the kids had association with. And I have a lot of people that just gave me a lot of encouragement and are supporting me beyond my wildest dreams. I literally am taken back by how much support and how nice people are. But that's literally the reason why I moved here, right? I mean, I love the town. I love the religious aspect of the town. I love that they have traditions, traditions that I would like to see continue. It has great values. We've got great public safety. There's a lot of great things about this town that I didn't see in other towns, and it was similar to the town that I came from in Arroyo Grande. And so I'll be canvassing the district to try to meet and reach out to the people that I don't know, because I think that's very important. I like to hear voices from all aspects and all the people, the citizens. I look forward to meeting all of you, and I'll be sharing my ideas. I'll have meet and greets, and I'll be out, you know, working the district and trying to do my best to represent everyone in our district, District One. So with that, I don't know how much time I have left, minute. I don't really have much more to add to that. I'm not going to get into policy or politics stuff tonight. I just wanted to introduce myself, say hello to those of you that don't know me, and to the District One citizens that may be listening or that are in the audience. I would appreciate your vote. Once you get to know me, once you get to learn about me, I think that you'll learn that I can represent our district in the most positive fashion imaginable, and I look forward to embracing the community and letting everybody know who I am. So with that, I'll turn it over to the next public comment, if somebody wants to get public comment. Thank you very much.
We will move to the row right in front of Mr. Silva. And did, did you have something to say in the same row? Right next to him, Mr. Silva? No? Okay. So we'll move to the row right in front of him. If you have something, do you want to come up, sir? Yes.
I simply wanted to come up and let you know that I haven't changed my mind about what I was here last month for and see if you guys have discussed it and if you've made a decision on my request.
What was your name, sir? What was your name?
John Gerard, G-E-R-A-R-D. And just let you know that I'm still up on it. And I don't know, did you discuss it at all? Or did you come up with a decision about having the public pay for it?
Sir, during public comment, we're not allowed to respond to anything that's not on the agenda.
I'm sorry.
You can direct staff to contact.
So I can just offer a brief, a brief update. So we've been discussing it in Public Works and with the Engineering Department to see if there's something that we could do in the short term. But, oh, sorry. We've been, we've been discussing it internally to see if there's something we can do in the short term for the alley. Paving it will be a larger discussion, as like we talked about before.
You know, the push doesn't work. It's good for three months, branch, more dust.
Got you.
Did not want you to think that I had changed my mind about it or lost my interest in it. It's still there, and that Nita and I are still breathing dust. I shouldn't say that much about my wife, anyway. She had a very good game yesterday out at the golf course. Brought home twenty-one dollars. Woo! We could almost go to lunch. But anyhow, I just, I'm still on it, and whatever he thinks you can do, whatever you think you can do. But I really think it's something that the public should pay for, because the public broke it up and created the mess by using it for a shortcut between the school and the next street. The rest of the alley, it's covered with dust, but all that's going to do is take a garden hose and wash it off. This can't be washed off because there's nothing underneath it but dirt. You'd be going for a long ways if you're trying to wipe that out. Anyhow, I'm still here, and I'll be here next month, and we'll see what's going on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
In the same row, do we have anyone that's here for public comment? Okay, we will move to the second row from the front. Is there anyone that's here for public comment? And front row is staff. So I am closing public comment, and we will move on to item number five, which is consent calendar. Items considered routine in nature are to be placed on the consent calendar. They will be considered as one item and voted upon in one vote unless individual consideration is requested. Each vote in favor of the consent calendar is considered and recorded as a separate affirmative vote in favor of each action listed. Tonight, the items that we have are five point one, which is our check register, five point two, adopt resolution number two thousand and twenty-two dash zero four three, and five point three, to approve the amendment, amendment number one. I have had a request from staff to pull item five point three and table it for a future agenda. So I have item five point one and five point two. Is there anyone on council that would like an item pulled? Is there anyone from the public that would like an item pulled? And staff, holding five point three?
Correct.
Then I will need a motion for five point one and five point two.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, our regular calendar. Six point one, how do I say this right? Boation?
Matoian.
Matouian?
Matoian.
Matouian? Matouian. Agreement to develop vacant land. APN three nine four dash zero four two dash zero four. Staff report by city manager Alexander Henderson and presentation by our city manager. Sorry about that.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. In two thousand and twenty-one, the city began discussions with the owner of a thirteen-acre parcel located north of the existing business park. That parcel map is attached in your packet. The parcel is in the city's sphere of influence. The discussions were initiated as the property owner, George Matouian, originally inquired about the ability to annex the parcel into the city and to prezone it for highway commercial use. Because the property didn't have a pending project for development, it did not meet the requirements for annexation as set forth in the city's memorandum of understanding with Fresno County. Because the property is located in the city's sphere of influence and has the potential for a higher and better use, the city and property owner begin to discuss the potential of a development agreement that would benefit both the city and the property owner. The proposal involves both the city and property owner, and then synopsis of the discussion includes the city's benefit. The city would receive three acres donated for future use, including the potential construction of a new city hall and council chamber facility. The remaining ten acre additional acres of commercial property with highway frontage would be more likely to be developed, thus increasing potential property tax and sales tax collection for the city. These additional ten acres would remain owned by the private property owner. And then the city has input and partnership with the property owner regarding future compatible development and use through a development agreement, which you are considering this evening. In return, the property owner would receive extension of the road right-of-way, sewer, water, and ancillary utilities from Avenue B to the south. Currently, the lack of road access and availability of utilities makes future development untenable. The cost for this infrastructure would be borne by the city. The parcel then would also be annexed into the highway commercial zone, and the process of that annexation would be led by the city. And the property owner would also receive a tax benefit of the donation of real property, the three acres valued at approximately one hundred and ten thousand dollars per acre. From an engineering and planning standpoint, it's unlikely the property will be developed for some time without additional access from the south. One point of access exists from Stroud Avenue on the north side of the property, but this access is off of Fresno County Road and is not suitable for other utility extensions or for primary access to the parcel. The parties have agreed in principle to a development agreement that outlines the responsibility of each party. As part of the agreed-upon language, the parties agreed to exclude or limit certain uses that are currently allowed in the highway commercial zoning, which staff did not feel would be appropriate co-located with a government facility. In addition, we are in the process of examining the city highway commercial zone for possible amendments, for example, the inclusion of mixed-use residential. Exhibit B of the agreement outlines the excluded uses from the highway commercial zone. If approved, the development agreement also includes a declaration of restrictive covenants intended to keep the agreement in place in the event the current property owner sells the remaining ten acres. The development agreement also includes timelines for the installation of the road and utilities, which must, which must be completed within one year after the recordation of the parcel map. Parcel map recordation would occur once the property has been annexed, which would be approved by Fresno Local Agency Formation Commission. Given the benefits outlined for both the property owner and the city, staff is recommending that the city council approve the donation agreement and development agreement as presented this evening and reviewed by the city attorney. That concludes my report, but I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that you may have. And the property owner, Mr. Matouian, is in the audience this evening.
Thank you. Council discussion on this item?
We've discussed it, you know, amongst us, council members and staff. I mean, I think it would be good for our city to do this, annex it into the, to the city, and then have more business, you know, like you're saying, with property tax. And my only concern would be, you know, we would, would it go in front of planning commission? For what type of businesses would go in, Alex?
Zoned.
Zoned, yeah.
It's going to get rezoned.
It'll get rezoned, but I mean, yeah, so.
It kind of depends upon the use. If they're permitted uses as outlined in the exhibit tonight, then it would go through like normal site plan review, and the staff would have that. And so not necessarily to the planning commission unless there was a proposed use that required a conditional use permit or something like that, for example. So it just depends upon what those future projects might be.
Right. It's intensely about this, so.
Yeah, I think this is one of those things that it's going to seem like there's not a lot of discussion because so much work has been done on the back end of this. You know, Mr. Matouian, Matouian family, thank you very much. You've, you've given a lot of your time, aside from just the, the large parcel gift that we're potentially looking at here, a lot of your time, and we've worked through a lot of issues. City attorney's done a lot of work on this. I know your attorneys have looked at this a lot. This is a, it's a big thing. It's not incredibly conventional, but I think that this is a project that is going to benefit the city of Kingsburg forever. And I know, Mr. Matouian, when we first sat down and talked about this, we talked a little bit about what this is going to look like for town. And you really brought up, this is kind of something you're interested in, because this is a little bit of a legacy for you also, and I think that that's exactly what this is going to be, is it's a, it's a very generous donation to the city. And I think that the legacy here is going to be your generosity. That's going to be remembered as long as we have, you know, that, those acres that are given to us. That's, that's something that from up here, I can say I'm very thankful for, for your family's generosity, and even looking at this. So I don't really have much else, other than I want people to know that this has been vetted a lot. There's been a lot of work that's gone into this. It seems like a very simple agenda item, but the city manager, city attorney, Matouian family has been so great to work with on this. So just from my stance, I just want to say thank you on behalf of council for what you've done so far.
I mean, we've, we've been working on this for a long time and just can't thank you and your family enough for your generosity and, and wanting to do something like this. I know not a lot of, not a lot of property owners want to think about working with the city and doing a donation like this, so I just want to say thank you for this, and hopefully this will spur other people to want to work with the city and do other kinds of donations like this. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you for your generosity. It doesn't go unnoticed by any of us. Okay, I will now open this up to public comment. Do you have any public comment on the agenda? Anybody that wants to come up? Okay, I will close public comment. And tonight, we have two independent actions, and these are two separate motions. Okay, so the first one that we have is that staff recommends approving the proposed donation agreement as presented.
I will gladly make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The second motion that we have before us is that staff recommends approving the proposed development agreement as presented.
I'll make that same motion.
And I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rowing District One.
The next item that we have is six point two, fiber optics development and operating agreement. City manager Alexander Henderson has the staff report and the presentation tonight.
Madam Mayor, members of council, tonight, we're going to go over a proposal with regards to the development of a fiber optic network. So a little bit of background on how we got to this point. So during the height of the pandemic, the city received several inquiries about existing internet options, specifically the need for higher speeds, given more individuals at home, on more devices, and some of the costs, challenges associated with current offerings. During that time, we also held a handful of workshops to discuss the American Rescue Plan Act funds or ARPA funding. And at that time, council tasked staff with soliciting public feedback on the use of those funds. And that survey included a handful of projects to utilize the funding for and asked residents to rank them based upon their priority. The installation of fiber broadband was one of those projects and was ranked as the highest priority. We also received several comments to use the funds for public safety cameras and other improvements that require investment in the, in the network infrastructure, specifically the city's network infrastructure. As such, council also directed staff to explore opportunities to improve upon our broadband infrastructure. We engaged both nonprofit and private sectors to complete a build-out, to basically give all residents and businesses the opportunity to connect to a new fiber optic internet option. And as part of the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three budget development and capital improvement project, discussions and designs, council ultimately approved the use of an interfund loan and ARPA funds to help pay for construction and implementation should an appropriate arrangement materialize. And so this is just a summary of, of that survey. The fiber optic is on the far left there, was ranked the highest, and then next was a community planning efforts. So, you know, why is this, kind of this discussion becoming, coming to the forefront? Obviously, you know, most people are viewing internet more as a necessity, almost like a utility, like water, electricity, or things like that, to provide security and enable their smart home system, systems. And then obviously, during the pandemic, we saw a lot of work from home and student distance learning, and a lot of those work from home requirements still exist today. And then just, you know, connection to a more global world. So lots of, you know, telemedicine, things like that are becoming more commonplace and require the need for this type of network and reliability. And then obviously, from a business perspective as well, you know, many businesses need, you know, the same reliability, and if they don't have internet, a lot of the times, their, their operations end up stopping. So why fiber? And it's a hundred-year technology, which can supply us both today and into the future. And we see, you know, prices similar to other markets where, you know, as private companies sort of swallow up other companies, there's less competition, and those prices begin to rise. From a future technology standpoint, there, you know, there are some five G developed emerging technologies, but those have some of the same infrastructure challenges. They have to build out, issues with network traffic, depending upon how many users are, are on the system. General liability, so fiber maintains speeds regardless of weather, user traffic, and distance. It also offers symmetrical upload speeds, so that's extremely important for video conferencing, work-from-home things, you know, where you have to do large file transfers, et cetera. And then just the scalability, the ability to expand it, and it doesn't lose its reliability over longer distances. So one of the things that we looked at was the, the potential of a public-private partnership. In this scenario, the city of Kingsburg would provide an initial loan and grant to Kingsburg Media Foundation, which is a local nonprofit, to help construct the fiber network. The city in this situation would benefit from revenue sharing throughout the life of the project, so both during the loan repayment and then potentially post-loan. And then obviously, the city reviews and designs. And then obviously the city reviews and designs permits and coordinates the construction with, with those entities. Kingsburg Media Foundation would serve as the internet service provider, providing customer service, in-home installation, invoicing, and would make monthly payments on the loan to the city. It would lease bandwidth from vast networks to ensure that there are adequate speeds in the community. And those minimum speeds are defined in the proposed agreement. The Media Foundation will have to work closely with VAST and the contractors in the city to coordinate the build out of the fiber optic system as well as the wireless overlay. And then perhaps most importantly, connects all city facilities, so our buildings, all of our water wells, the public safety cameras that were, that were continuing to add to, to the, to the fiber system. And then Stephen, VAST, would contract directly with Kingsburg Media Foundation. They would install the conduit and fiber, they would own it and then maintain it. So if there's a cut in the middle of the night or something like that, they're the, they're the entity responsible for coming out and replacing it or repairing it. And then they will lease that bandwidth directly to Kingsburg Media Foundation. So just, you know, some of the benefits that, that we saw with working, especially with a, with a local internet service provider is, you know, keeps money in, in our community, keeps it local, supports a, a local nonprofit. They also obviously have local customer service representatives. We, we view the additional option for residents and businesses as, as a benefit. So not a requirement to utilize this system, but essentially more competition means more options for our residents. And again, VAST has the infrastructure throughout the valley and throughout the state and the ability to quickly address issues. So some of the, some of the details of the, of the loan and the grant. So again, the city would provide a $2.2 million loan, along with a million dollars in ARPA funds. So $3.2 million in total. There is a 4% interest, eight-year payback on the $2.2 million. So the total payback to the city is $2,574,000 and $374. So the total interest payment is, is obviously that difference, so roughly $374,000. What's important to note is it doesn't really matter how quickly that's paid, that's amortized regardless. And so it's not, you know, like your, like a mortgage payment, if you make extra payments, you pay less interest. That, that's a total amount that would be paid regardless of if it was paid back in a year or if it took all eight years. But based upon the business structure of Kingsburg Media Foundation, the repayment of that loan is secured by a subscriber account receivables. So just kind of the structure of how that gets paid back is that until the total number of subscribers reaches 400, principal and interest payments under the loan are equal to 50% of the Media Foundation's net profit. Net profit is defined a little bit later. Once it goes to 401, that jumps up to 60%. And then if there is a situation after 60 months where at least 50% of the principal balance is not repaid, that amount goes to 75%. So it increases those repayments to the city. And then there is language that allows the city to audit Kingsburg Media Foundation's books and records to ensure that those parent, payments, the subscribers and those payments are being correctly applied. So post-loan, once the loan is satisfied, there's language that would require the negotiation of what we call the take rate percentage, which is the percentage of that payment to the city. So we have an agreement that we will negotiate between 15 and 40% of the monthly net profit. If we're unable to come to an agreement immediately, that amount lands on 27.5% being paid to the city. That's just 50% of that, in between that 15 and 40% range. And then based upon what the city's needs are for bandwidth, IT services, telephone, our public wifi and public safety camera project, we can, that's the, the reason for the range, because it's difficult to know what the city's needs will be in the future. And then there's language in there that essentially allows us to do have credit swaps. So if the city has a payment to Kingsburg Media Foundation for what they're providing for us, we can utilize a portion of that take rate amount to just offset those, those costs. So this is an example of, of what those potential payments could look like. So it's, it's a formula where the payment is determined based upon the number of subscribers, based upon the average billing, and then the take rate percentage that is in place at that time. So on the left-hand side, you can see the total number of subscribers. As that grows, then the income total would obviously go up. And then the average bill to all subscribers. And I attempted to use conservative numbers for this presentation, but, you know, for example, if you get 1,000 subscribers and you have some businesses at different tiers and things like that, that number's likely to be higher than 50 or $75 on average. The final column there, there's a note that the take rate goes back down to 25%. So that's just an example of it being post-loan. So that payment to the city of just shy of $19,000 would be not paying the loan back anymore. It would be discretionary funds on a monthly basis that the city could use for other services. Staff estimates that there's about 4,000 customers that could potentially become subscribers. We have about 4,000 accounts in our solid waste program, but that's a little different because if you go to like multifamily home complexes and things like that, they, they usually have one account. Whereas for this, you'd be, you'd be getting every single apartment. So outside, an, an alternative is a non-public financing portion. So if the city did not contribute to the loan, we've had that discussion as well. And so we view, there's obviously some benefits and some drawbacks to that, and we wanted to discuss that tonight as well. So obviously the significant benefit is the elimination of the loan from the build out. So reduces our, our risk, our exposure in case of default or poor subscriber activity. Keeps those funds available for city use, but they're not really discretionary. They're only being suggested to be used in this case because it's not a grant. It's, it's a loan which will be repaid with interest. And it still provides an additional community option and provides all the benefits for the residents at Kingsburg. From a drawback standpoint, obviously, without the loan, there's no longer a revenue sharing component. So the ability to, to get that, that interest payment as well as post-loan revenue sharing. And then the potential for, obviously, for higher costs for services utilized by the city, as I mentioned. You know, as our needs organizationally grow and as the community continues to grow and, you know, there's more emphasis on technology, cameras, things like that in our subdivisions, that could increase the, the city's contribution for our bandwidth needs. And then just the timing of construction. So if VAST was willing to finance this themselves, that would have to go through their, their board for approval and probably would be, you know, several months out from, from where we're currently at. So before I go through the construction portion, are there questions about the financing component or the options there?
I, I don't have a question about the financing component. I have a question about our availability to be involved when it comes to how much the consumer is being charged. So that's a great rate, $50 and 75 is a great start. However, I think it would even take it a step further if we were able to provide a discounted rate to first responders, military, right, and there's another one I'm thinking of, seniors, potentially? I know it's already discounted, so is that out of the scope because it's already discounted? Or is that something we could potentially think about providing as well?
There's language in the agreement right now that talks about the internet service provider basically participating in some of the subsidies, the federal subsidies, access for all programs. There's not specific language about rate setting specifically because if the city's involved in rate setting, then it gets into sort of the Prop 218 position where you have less flexibility in, in, you know, basically staying up with the market or staying competitive in the market. So that's the reason for that not being included specifically.
It will be understood, just curious. Thank you.
Okay, so from a construction standpoint, it would involve the installation of 17 miles of conduit and fiber through major thoroughfares in strategic locations in Kingsburg, and I'll, I'll show you a map shortly. That would be installed in the city right away via directional boring, open trenching or micro trenching, so all underground. There'd be strategically placed access points on city-owned facilities that would allow all homes and businesses to connect via wifi. And then some locations will obviously have direct fiber connections available, which we expect to expand as the, as the system, you know, is, is installed and, you know, people desire that type of service. Again, the 17-mile build out will connect all municipal buildings and facilities, our park locations, and provide strategic access for current and future expansion. As I mentioned, VAST will own and maintain the fiber and provide the dedicated bandwidth. The bandwidth will be leased to Kingsburg Media Foundation, who will serve as the internet service provider. And so residents and businesses would request to be connected, working directly with them. And then from a timing standpoint, again, dependent upon direction of council, if there was action that was made this evening or in the near future, we anticipate that construction based upon design permitting would, could potentially begin as early as this year and hopefully be completed in early 2023, which would allow subscriber connections to be made shortly thereafter because a lot of the access point work can be done in conjunction or even before the underground work. So be ready to connect homes and businesses. So this is a map, so you can kind of see that green line that you see in the middle coming down Golden State has already been constructed. It's a project outside of this project. The remaining 17 miles includes all that red. And so obviously done in, in a way that we could hit all portions of the community as well as the city facilities based upon, you know, their existing location, water wells and, and other buildings. And then what's important is that there's a redundancy to the system. So coming from the north in a couple of different directions, so you can see that there's a line kind of right in the middle also that runs all the way up Mendocino. So if there is some sort of damage that occurs in some portion, you're not knocking out the entire system. People maintain their reliability. So again, just a sort of a summary of kind of the benefit and the need both to residents and businesses, but then also just touching on those, those needs of the city. So the necessary backbone, higher bandwidth for less cost, a customer service and supporting a local nonprofit that, that we work with on a lot of existing projects, like we've talked about, our public wifi, our public safety camera system and the city's IT solutions. And so there's a potential for, for future partnerships as well. So this evening, staff is seeking council and public feedback at this point. There are, if there is a desire by, by council, there are, there is the option to approve the proposed development and operating agreement with Kingsburg Media Foundation. And then there's also a proposed side letter with Stephen and VAST that they would step in and provide a necessary ISP service should there be the inability for Kingsburg Media Foundation to fulfill their, their portion of, of the contract in terms of the internet service provider. So that concludes my report, but I'm certainly happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Council discussion, do we wanna start with council or do we want to hear from public first?
Public, please.
Public? Okay, so we will start with public comment and conversation, and then we will bring it back to council discussion. So we're gonna do the opposite, we're gonna start from the front to the back. So front row, second row, third row, any public comment? Fourth row, fifth row? Come on up and state your name, please.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Tal Eslick with Vista Consulting. First of all, it's good to be back in Kingsburg. I'm from Clovis and it's nice to be in the, I'm from the second cutest downtown in Fresno County. Thank you for the opportunity to, to chat tonight regarding item 6.2. First of all, I guess apologies to staff, has been a bit of a fire drill from us over the last 72 hours. And I've been in that role myself, and so compliments to the city manager, thank you for accommodating us. I'm with Comcast on behalf of Comcast here this evening. And it was good to see the presentation. I think public-private partnerships are, are smart in many communities. I'll tell you, I'm seeing some version of this in many areas in our region. And I think it's, you know, a way, after the pandemic, a lot of folks recognize that reliable internet is key to being educated and, and working from home and is, is something right towards, you know, essential for, for living and thriving in your community. We would ask just respectfully that the council consider simply a delay on this particular item and adopting it this evening. Comcast is very active throughout the region. And these projects, I know there's a lot of work put into them, there was a lot of research done. I'll tell you, the, the timeline is, I think if there's any city that can do it before the end of the year, it's, it's probably Kingsburg. But, you know, that's, these things take months and, and unfortunately can, can take years. So we ask again, just a, a simple delay and allow, in the interest of competition. I don't have a strong familiarity with the, what seems like a pretty creative sort of loan to a nonprofit, but then contracting with a provider and the city backstopping that. I mean, that's, it'd probably be a little bit different if it was truly a, a private sector entity providing the service. But anyhow, we would ask again respectfully that the council consider simply delaying to the next meeting and allow Comcast to come in and, and put their best foot forward in the interest of, of your constituents. And I, I'll tell you, there's, there are benefits to nonprofit organizations providing the services. Again, that's pretty common, I think, throughout our country. And, and post-pandemic, we had trillions of dollars plowed into a lot of forms of infrastructure. But knowing a little bit about Kingsburg, I, I think you guys would welcome the competition. I, I imagine the folks that are, that are here this evening and that are, you know, before you right now would feel strongly enough about their perspective that, you know, a few weeks wouldn't, a few weeks and some additional looking at it wouldn't, wouldn't be devastating. So again, respectfully, just ask that you guys consider that this evening and, you know, put the pressure on, on Comcast or other folks to, to come forward to sit to the city and, and provide a perspective that, again, is good for, for your residents. And that's all I have this evening. There's a, a gentleman from Comcast that has additional comments, but thank you for the time this evening.
Tal, can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, real quick. Has Comcast ever partnered with cities where the city can do revenue sharing or take rate?
It's a very good question. I'll, I'll defer to Nathan who will follow up after me. I, I will say that there are many, just because I'm familiar with, with other communities in our, in Fresno County where we've had this exact same discussion. There are a number of programs that Comcast does provide, Internet Essentials being one of them, that I don't think, and again, because my business is focused only on this region. Cities, in many cases, don't take advantage of those programs. And those can provide, at the, at the time, free or at least discounted internet based on some of the things that Jewel was talking about, and it can be to disadvantaged communities and other folks. So there, there are programs available that are existing. And part of that promotion needs to happen with Comcast partnering with community leaders to make sure folks, in many cases, simply sign up for free or severely, you know, heavily discounted internet. So in that regard, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sorry, very tall, I have to do this all the time. And then I feel bad for the next speaker who will have to lower it way down. Good evening, Mayor North, members of the council. Nathan Ali, I'm the Director of Government Affairs for the South Valley for Comcast. Just wanted to expand on Mr. Eslick's comments and echo, again, our desire to take a little pause on this. Comcast welcomes competition. Comcast is a disruptor in many communities that we come into, to be quite honest with you. But we appreciate competition on what I would consider to be a level playing field. So a, a brief continuance in order to allow all providers, not necessarily just us, but all providers to come to the table and really take a holistic look at the broadband needs of the community and offer any solutions that, that there might, that we might need. I know what you're all thinking. Many of you are Comcast customers and we thank you for that. And I'm sure that you may have had And I'm sure that you may have had, you may have heard issues with the network, or issues with, with bandwidth, or throttling, or pricing, or whatever the case might be. Recognizing in staff's presentation that during the pandemic, you heard from your residents these challenges, recognizing that that falls at the feet of Comcast. I, I, I would, it would be disingenuous of me to come here and say otherwise. That said, we welcome the opportunity to examine our network. Our network in Kingsburg is fully built out, we can provide speeds of up to 1.2 gigabytes down through the existing infrastructure in, in Kingsburg that exists today. As, as Mr. Eslick suggested, we offer a number of programs for adequate pricing to meet all, all types of income levels. Tal mentioned briefly our Internet Essentials program. We're proud of that, it's in its eleventh year. The thing about Internet Essentials that I think is so remarkable is Fresno County is the number one adoption county for Internet Essentials customers. Over the life of the program, we've had over three hundred thousand Fresno County residents that have taken advantage of it. And the way it works is pretty simple, it's, it's nine ninety-five a month for fifty megabytes down, ten megabytes up. We offer an enhanced program that's a hundred megabytes down, ten megabytes up. At twenty-nine ninety-five a month, with a thirty dollar a month affordable connectivity program, which the city manager mentioned, federal overlay on top of that. That eliminates the monthly internet costs for families. That's, that's a game changer, and it's basically if you qualify for any type of public assistance, whether that be SNAP or reduced or free school lunches, you qualify for this program. The challenge that we run into is adoption. How do we get that word out? How do we make sure that residents know that this program is available to them? And how do we walk them through getting them registered and getting them signed up to take advantage of this benefit? We're somewhat limited in the legalities of being a large corporation and having access to people's private data, that we rely on an education process to help folks do it themselves, but we also rely on nonprofit organizations to help us bridge that gap. We have materials that can help people sign up for this program in thirty-five languages. So we think we've, we're running the gamut when it comes to how do we get the word out. So my message to you tonight, in addition to put a pause on this item and let's look at holistic solutions for the entire community, is help me spread the word about this program. Help me spread the word that we can get folks free internet today with, with these programs that are available to them and the federal credits that, that are available to them. In regard to your, your question specifically, Mayor, about public-private partnerships with Comcast that involve a take rate, I'm unfamiliar with that, I'd be happy to get back to you on that. Again, we are a large company, I'm not aware of any in California, but it's certainly possible that in other regions we have done that work. Comcast is continuing to partner with communities all across the country to either move into new territories or expand and enhance the existing networks in conjunction with cities and stimulus funding. So that's my ask of you this evening, and I'm happy to entertain any questions or sit down and continue with public comment. Thanks very much.
I have a quick question.
Oh, sure.
Sorry, we're all, I think we're all going to have something.
I gave you a lot here, sorry.
No, you did. Those programs you mentioned are great. I guess my one question to you is, because we're like eleventh hour, you're coming in, we haven't heard anything from you at any point? How come? Why, why is this the first we've heard of these programs publicly? And how come you guys haven't brought any of these forward for the citizens so far?
It's a fair point. I can speak personally that I've been on the job four months. So at this point, you know, that, that's the Occam's razor answer, is new enroll. We have, have dramatically expanded our external affairs team to more adequately cover the state. I mean, that, that is quite accurate. And again, as Tal pointed out, it's a fire drill. City manager was kind enough to move his calendar around to give us some time and, and answer my questions, and I do appreciate that. That's, that's the short answer. The longer answer is, again, it, it, it takes time for us to ramp these things up, but moving forward, I can tell you that that's a commitment of my folks that I report to up in California, in our West Division office in Denver and all the way in headquarters in Philadelphia, is spread the word about these programs, spread the word about these programs. Comcast is committed to digital equity, I think our numbers in Fresno County show that, it's just about a question of getting the word out.
So how many people are local that do what you do? Are you the only one?
Yes.
Fresno, right?
Yes. I have, I have five counterparts across the state. My, my territory stretches from the city of Tulare in the south up to Modesto, and then I have a little island of northern Santa Barbara County that I'm covering, which is Solvang, which is, you know, it's kind of got charm, but it ain't Kingsburg.
It ain't Kingsburg.
It ain't Kingsburg.
I, I have some questions. You had mentioned a few things with free and reduced lunch, like for schools and stuff like that, so I've been a principal here in town for, this is my twelfth year in Kingsburg. I was in a previous district before that, down the road, including like two and a half years during the pandemic. You know, we're finally on the other side of it, this year's looking, dare I say, normal. All of our students in the state of California have had free and reduced lunch during the whole pandemic, and now because of the universal access bill from our governor, it's indefinite. So I heard you mention that about free and reduced lunch, and I know you said, did you say four months you've been on the job?
Correct.
Okay, so I know, like, this is not just aimed at you, but we have been in school for a couple of weeks. As a principal, I've been back since July twenty-fifth, and I know we've had many principal meetings, have not heard anything about free internet for Comcast, like, we could have pushed that out for you guys. Where was Comcast during the pandemic? We were dying in this community for our students in trying to just come at the last minute and dish the stuff out, get hotspots, all of these things to serve the students in our community, and our community might not have the needs of ones down the road, but we have our needs here. And I never, I mean, I've been on council for six, almost six years, been a principal, like, right here down the street, and I never heard from Comcast. I did hear from Kingsburg Media Foundation, who's here, like, within our community, so, like, that just would concern me a little bit, where I'm, I'm just hearing from you today. Or I got an email from Tal today at 1:03 PM. I hadn't heard anything from Comcast before today, so that concerns me.
It's a fair point, and, and as I, I said to Councilmember Purcell, you know, I, I can't speak to what occurred prior to my joining the firm. I know that over the, the course of the pandemic, Comcast deployed what we called lift zones, which are free gigabit community Wi-Fi zones that folks can come and do their homework. We continue to deploy those across the state of California. But again, I, I can't answer to what we did two years ago. I, I totally understand your comment, and, and I, I do take it, and I report it up to my folks certainly, that, that we have outreach work to do.
So according to what you said, all kids that qualify for free and reduced lunch get, their families get free internet, because all of them qualify right now?
They all qual, they all qualify for that program, and I, and I use free and reduced lunch as an example of...
It's got to be different, because they all qualify.
Some type of, some type of assistance program, whether that be SNAP, whether it be Medi-Cal, WIC, whatever the case might be. I, I need to remind myself that free and reduced lunch, as you said, is a somewhat antiquated method of referring to eligibility, because as you pointed out, everyone receives that benefit at this point. But again, WIC, SNAP, Medi-Cal, those types of programs all qualify.
Our parents are also getting many of those, they opened it up to all parents, where they're getting several hundred dollars a month per kid on those cards to use for groceries. So I don't know what your system uses, but right now we could take advantage of that with the schools if you give us the information.
And, and regardless of, you'll have that information from me regardless of this item. Because even, even if you move forward with this item, you know, Comcast is still here in the community, so we still have a responsibility to make sure you get that information.
I'm a customer, by the way, and I didn't know any of this.
And, and we will, we will partner with any not-for-profit organization that we need to. It could be the Kingsburg Media Foundation, we'd be happy to partner with them to spread the word about adoption, to spread the word about these benefits, because the, the ACP is a new program, you know, it's part of the stimulus and part of the pandemic response. And again, large companies, sometimes we don't move as quickly as we should. It's been a challenge to roll those things out and make sure that we understand how that we do it, and that we need to meet folks where they are. And that's why, again, we developed this type of collateral in thirty-five languages. I was up in Fresno, and I said, you got to give me Armenian, and they worked and they got me Armenian, and you can read it in the Armenian language. So it's, we will, we will work anytime, anyplace, our commitment is to meet folks where they are and get them signed up for this.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thanks very much.
Yeah, I have a, I have a question.
Oh, okay.
Well, my concern is that, I feel that, you know, Comcast with the revenue sharing, there's probably no way to do that, you know, honestly, and then if we were to table this item, you know, how long would it take for you to present your proposal to staff?
Well, my understanding is that your next meeting is, is canceled due to the League of California Cities. I can, I can certainly put a rush on this. I, our, my goal here is not to delay this thing so that it goes away. My goal is to delay it so that all folks can have an opportunity to have a conversation with the community about its infrastructure needs. So if, if, if you would like this to return on your next agenda item, which would be, I believe, the third Wednesday in September, we'll make it happen.
Could make it happen, okay. That's my question, thank you.
I have a request, regardless of whatever happens tonight, could you still send that information to all of us?
Thank you.
Thank you.
The same row, any public comment?
Hello, Mayor North, fellow council members there, city staff, thank you. My name is Reggie Gurkey, I am the CEO of Kingsburg Media Foundation, and I've been working pretty closely with the city manager on this project for probably six or eight months now. So there's a lot of time that goes into planning to figure something out like this. Just to give you a little bit of background on, maybe kind of answer some of the questions that you guys had, and I, I saw a little bit of the, the concerns that took place there. We are currently a partner with Comcast for some of our fiber transit, transport, and I have worked with Comcast for about eight years in various levels of lots of contracts, and I've had many, many conversations with them about trying to do something like this in Kingsburg, and either never got a response, or nobody showed up for a meeting. So I, I, to be fair, I, I did give them a shot since I was already one of their customers too, so I, I've had a little bit of a, little bit of a throwback on that one, and again, that, I know, I know he's new, and it might have been his predecessor, but just wanted to let you know that. We currently are fully registered with the FCC for all the affordability connectivity programs. We already are enrolled in those, we have a longstanding relationship within the community, not only with the schools, but with organizations like CAPS, with churches, with a lot of the organizations, Chamber of Commerce, service clubs, all those kind of things. So we already have a relationship that we can go to the participants that would benefit from this, and we can even seek out those that we know might be a little, I don't want to say proud, but for lack of better terms, proud to ask for that help. And we have relationships that we can, we can help them with that. As a nonprofit, I don't have investors, I don't have shareholders, I don't have any of those people that I have to give a cut to. So really, the money that we bring in on a, on a project like this is strictly for the purposes of funding the project, and obviously the people that it takes to maintain it and keep it running. For that reason, our prices are very negotiable, and that thirty-dollar ACP fund could be what we go with, and we would be okay with that. And, and we can look at it on a case-by-case basis, we don't have a stringent pricing scheme where this is your address, this is what you pay. It's, let's have conversations. Somebody comes to us and say, there's a special need within a family, and they need something temporarily or what have you, we can accommodate that, and we can accommodate it quickly. We have done projects like this before, we are in the process of deploying something very similar to this in another community, and during the height of the pandemic, we helped out the community of Traver by, with a partnership with the, the high school here in town to provide the residents free internet, free high-speed internet for the whole, the whole thing during that, and it's still there, and a lot of people still utilize it, and it's a great, it's a great thing. So we, we have all the ability to do all of that, but we also have the local connection. I'm from Kingsburg, all of my employees are from Kingsburg. You call, you call to, and you have a problem, we answer the phone, and somebody comes out there and takes care of it. And to say that, we, we aren't the only option, there's plenty of other options, and honestly, I don't want to be the only option, because I'm not sure if I'm ready to handle that many connections at once, but I, I, I like, I like competition too, and I, I think it's good, and it's good to have more options, because the more options there are, the more you can spread out the load. But we're here, and I'm ready for any questions that you might have.
I have a question.
Yes.
Thank you so much for that insight, that answered a bunch of questions off the top that I don't have to ask. You mentioned that the support would be from local folks, correct?
Correct.
So the tech account support, things like that, troubleshooting, anything related to that?
Yep.
Awesome. Do you have the availability to cover different languages?
We can do Spanish and English for sure right now, but we also have a translator service that we can use through a phone if we have to, so.
Then that's an option, it's like there's not an option, there is an option.
Yeah, we just hold the phone and we, we talk to them.
Perfect, okay, thank you.
And if there's an issue, like a, a bigger issue with the system, if you've got with lots of your customers, who would take care of that, other than just tech support that's bigger, that if it's a bigger system, that's a problem?
We, we have, we have six full-time employees, and they're on call twenty-four hours a day, all of them are. We even, we contract with a call answering service to make sure phone calls are answered twenty-four hours a day, and then they then send me a message at two in the morning, and I go take care of it. But if bigger issues, really seeing the bigger issues would be something to happen with the infrastructure, and that's really where VAST would come in, because most likely it's a fiber issue. And they have twenty-four-hour on-call people too, they're going to come in, they're going to fix it, we're going to be there to fix it too. Any issues that are there, I mean, it's, it's our network, I see it real time exactly what's going on, and it's my friends, my family, my, the people I know that are affected by it too, and so, you know, I, I don't want them giving me a hard time later. So yeah, we have the ability to handle, handle big problems. Currently, we, we are deployed through a fixed wireless setup throughout most of Fresno County, some of northeastern Tulare County, and a very small portion of Kings County, northern Kings County. Out of that, we got about six hundred and fifty active clients that are connected to that network, and we, we take care of it all.
Is this now is going to, you know, this infrastructure is throughout the whole city, and with VAST, obviously, but, but what I'm just talking about is if something catastrophic goes down, you're saying that the VAST would be the ones that, that would take care of?
Assuming it's a fiber issue, yes. If it's something with fiber, yes, if it's something else, it's, it's us. There's redundancy built into the network, so if it is a fiber cut, it reroutes a different direction automatically. You might, you know, Netflix might buffer for thirty seconds while it figures it out, and then you're, you're back at it. If it has something to do with the wireless infrastructure, it's all meshed and trying to not get too technical on it, but it's a self-healing network on its own. So if somebody hits a light pole that one of the nodes is on, and it knocks the pole down and takes that out, those houses can, that are connected to that can reconnect to other nodes within the area, kind of like, if you think a bit like your cell phone, as you're driving down the highway, you don't have to reprogram your cell phone to what tower you're on, so it, it takes care of a lot of that on its own.
Are you anticipating hiring more people then?
Most likely, yes. Yes, yeah, it, it'll, to start with, for the initial rollout, we probably have, are pretty close to what we're at, but I've, I've got people in my back pocket ready to go, just make the call when we have the need for them, and they're Kingsburg people too, so.
I, I work in home internet tech support, so I know those calls take forever, so do you honestly think that there's enough scope of support if you're doing this in another city? That's capacity four thousand, they said in this town?
Yes. We, we have the capacity, it's very scalable, is the nice thing about it, so.
It's going to slow a ramp, it's not going to all happen.
Right, it's not like overnight we'll have four thousand connections. We currently, within the city... Um, we currently within the city limits have about a hundred and fifty, uh, that are on our existing network that we would transition over into this network and they would automatically end up on it, um, through that process. So, uh, the city has a hundred and fifty clients in their revenue share already built in. So, uh, that's kind of our, I guess, down payment for lack of better terms and, and our, our buy-in to just show you that we're, we're in this. If it doesn't work, I, uh, I'll be lining up at the soup kitchen probably, so I've got a, I've got a lot of personal buy-in on it too.
Are you open to a partnership? Because you said you mentioned, I'm sorry, you said you mentioned, you mentioned, um, that you had previously reached out to a different support, you reached out to Comcast?
Yes, yeah, I've-
Open to doing something like that?
I, you know, i- if somebody's willing to do, we, we don't have the capacity to install a fiber network in town. We're just not that big of an organization. Um, it's very expensive to get into and get started. So VAST is somebody that's been very open and very willing to help. Uh, it's one of those things I can, I can send a text message to somebody and I have an answer right away. So they're really easy to work with from that standpoint. So it's a good relationship that's our, that we already have established with them, so it makes it easier for us, um, in the long run. Uh, we, we have, we also have a relationship with Comcast currently for some circuits that we have. Little harder level of communication, I can feel that when you got to call a one-eight-hundred number and let it go through its processes and prompts and everything, that, that can be a little more, a little more difficult. But, uh, I'm, to answer your question, I, I'd be willing to do it or work with anybody that's willing to kind of meet us where we're at on it. Yeah.
I have three questions.
Mm-hmm.
The first one is, um, the fiber that was pulled from the ninety-nine corridor, was that VAST?
That is VAST and that's actually our circuits, uh, with VAST, so.
So to pull from that, you'd need to have a partnership with VAST?
Correct.
Okay.
Or use whatever provider already has what in town.
And that was pulled through Selma because Selma did it for schools or something?
Yeah, Selma, uh, VAST could probably speak better to that, but I know they worked with Selma Unified, um, and built a network there. And so it was close for us there. Uh, but then VAST also provides service to a few of our other locations. So we kind of, kind of rings together and, and works out.
You mentioned, um, so my second question, you mentioned something that I didn't know where you had said you had contacted Comcast and with this idea that you wanted to try to work out. You mentioned that you, um, tried to contact them, I don't know if that was phone or email, and then there were missed meetings. Um, I didn't know that, that you had already tried this with Nathan's predecessor, sounds like. Um, how many times do you think you tried to communicate with them?
Well, well, I, I mean, maybe to give you a little bit, I, uh, you know, I like to play fair with things. But, um, we, we have, uh, contracts currently with Comcast, um, several of them. Um, we probably, we have probably the majority of what's in town, um, from a circuit standpoint with them, other than their own obvious network. But, um, my account rep that I currently have, I don't think it's Nathan's predecessor or it's probably a different, it's an enterprise versus, uh, government, right? Um, I've worked with them on several occasions. I presented something similar to this, not exactly like this, but wanting to build more fiber within Kingsburg. Um, Comcast has a, um, has a direct, uh, line in their terms of services that you cannot redistribute, resell, re-provide any of their bandwidth outside of the address that it's registered to. Um, so if you're using their bandwidth, that would create a special contract negotiation with them to make that happen. Uh, we don't use Comcast bandwidth, we just lease fiber from them, um, use their, use their line to get to the next place. We actually purchase our bandwidth from Hurricane Electric up in northern California, so. Um, trying to work that out, just, it seemed like it got caught up in, in corporate weeds. And when it would go up, it didn't make it back down and meetings just didn't take place.
So several?
Several attempts.
Okay.
Not specific to this exact design, but this general idea.
Okay. And then, um, one concern I have that just came up tonight is, um, I know that we haven't had anything from Comcast. They haven't had like an opportunity to bring something before us. Um, we've, we've been working through this for a while. Um, they're a huge company that has dedicated people to advertise. So how are you going to advertise, like what's your plan for advertising to our community?
Kingsburg does a really good job of advertising for you. Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and admit that. Uh, Fa- Facebook is a pretty powerful, uh, venue here in Kingsburg and-
Everyone's on Facebook, especially older people.
Sure, no, no, definitely, we, yeah, we have, exactly. I mean, Facebook is a good start, right? Uh, it gets the word out there. We, um, we obviously partner with a lot of different organizations in town to help with that process. Um, I, we've got, uh, marketing materials already prepped, uh, to, doing the USPS to every door, um, so that they can get that information, doing, um, just pamphlets and flyers and, you know, the good old fashioned pounding door-to-door, yep.
But you have partnerships, you mentioned, he mentioned like partnerships with, um, CAPS and churches and especially people who would heavily benefit from that. So I think that's a good start.
I mean, that's always been our, our, that's kind of been the nexus of why we exist is to, to meet people where they're at for digital needs. Um, and it's nice being, you know, a small company. We don't want to get big so that we don't lose that feel.
Any other question, questions for Reggie? Do you have a question?
Go ahead.
Quick question.
Sure.
I, we are coming down hard on Comcast tonight, so.
Sorry.
Uh, no, we are too, that's okay. Um, there are other providers for ISP, right, um, home internet. So, um, did we reach out to potentially any of the other ones? AT&amp;T?
Uh, AT&amp;T just recently started developing fiber, um, here in Kingsburg. Uh, and it was for the school district, um, is the reason they came in, uh, because of that contract. Um, again, um, it was kind of ironic, but about a month ago, I actually had somebody from AT&amp;T finally start calling me, um, wanting to partner and, uh, sell us some bandwidth and fiber and everything. But, uh, their, their prices and their timelines were significantly larger.
AT&amp;T's high, yeah.
Yes.
They're big corporations to be fair.
Yes.
But I know that because of the pandemic, we've seen so many different corporations kind of meet, you know, the moment. Um, but I was just curious, they're the only ones, other one?
That's the only ones, uh, that's really the only main options in town that are within the region. I mean, there's, there's other fiber providers out there, it's just getting it to Kingsburg and that gets even more expensive when you got to go miles. Yeah.
The district changed to AT&amp;T a year ago and it, we have to send things out to bid and they came back with the lowest price, so.
Maybe we'll bid next time.
Question I had was, uh, so the King Media Foundation is going to contract with VAST?
Correct.
Right, and Kim, the city has nothing to do with that contract, right Alex? Just between them two or?
Correct, yeah, so we have a, the proposed agreement is specifically with Kingsburg Media Foundation and he's required, he has requirements that he has to meet in that agreement. Um, he'll have to contract out to complete some of those. Right.
Say go to head, Laura kind of already asked it was about advertisement, uh. So I know you're, you're going to advertise, well, we can too, like the Kingsburg Carrier and stuff, right? You know?
I mean, yeah, I mean, I, I, I mean, I would do the same thing, I'm going to do the same thing for Comcast too. So, uh, you know, we, the goal here for, from staff's perspective is just to provide, uh, option to consider, right? So, um, you know, residents, businesses have a choice that, that they can make. It's not necessarily favoring one, one company over the other for, from our perspective. So we're happy to, you know, h- help with the Comcast advertising as well.
Yeah.
Right.
Especially for the students.
Students, yeah.
Because we saw the input from the community, from, for, for the ARPA funding, right? It was the one that was prioritized the most, so regardless, we're going to do something, it's just. Any other questions for Reggie before we let him sit down?
I do.
Okay.
I'm going to put you on the hot seat a little bit.
All right.
Um, and I'm really doing this because it's so much money from the city. But I have a couple of just small questions, but really I just need to kind of put you publicly out there to make statements.
Okay.
So you're held accountable, just to be completely transparent. With this amount of money, what is a realistic timeframe until you are up and running?
Well, we, we've been already working with our vendors, um, for the equipment that we need and we can get it within weeks if we need it. So the supply chain issue has, of that part of it's been resolved. I, realistically, we're kind of at the mercy of construction, we're at the mercy of permits, um, we're at the mercy of all of that, um, for the, the fiber infrastructure part and I'm, and VAST can probably speak better to that. But while they're building, um, we are also building, we'll have everything in place. We can start installing homes and having them ready to go. Um, and then as soon as the light is in the tube, their, their internet's on. So to answer, to be honest with you, it, it really depends on what the, uh, what the input is. Uh, if we have ten people ask for it, we could have all of those ten homes installed in two days. If we have a thousand people, realistically, it's probably going to take us a couple of months to do it, um, but.
What I'm asking is, so correct me if I'm wrong, and I'm going to super simplify this and tell me if it's wrong, anybody that knows better than me, because this is a complicated project for people to understand.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I've tried to explain it to citizens in the past and I, it's just a hard concept. But my understanding of it is there is going to be three entities involved in this. There is VAST is going to own the fiber, correct? We're, the city is going to own the conduit or the infrastructure associated with that?
No, VAST owns, VAST will own the conduit, we're, we're giving them permission via an encroachment permit to put it in our right-of-way.
Okay, so we just own the right-of-ways?
Correct.
For it, which is going to allow us the take rate?
Correct.
In, in addition to that, that we're using city facilities, so the take rate is our lease payment to use city facilities for that equipment.
And you are providing the actual internet service?
Correct.
So when I was reviewing the contract, to speak to Councilmember Roman's point, when we have these catastrophic events, we're going to have somebody dig up a line, we're going to have somebody crash into something, it's inevitable. Uh, the contract gives you and VAST specific response deadlines, correct?
Correct.
And I just publicly want to put you on the spot to have you verbally say that you can meet those.
Yes, we can meet those.
Because that's, I think what she's talking about, she's afraid it's all going to go down because there was a car crash. But in the contract, we've specifically laid out timelines for those kind of things. And so that we're not going to end up having to cost the city a ton of money to go out and replace those lines. If we just own the right-of-way, we're not really-
There's really no cost to the city.
Responsible for that.
It's not, it's not our responsibility at all, so we're not creating like a new utility or something like that, so. Yeah, I mean, I think it, you know, as Reggie was mentioning, it kind of depends upon what the catastrophe is, right? If it's a pole, it's him probably, if it's more, more than likely, it's probably going to be somebody cutting a line, right? And then that's VAST and they're, you know, they have, I mean, they can talk about, I guess, their response times.
Someone has that, someone can go out there and fix that.
Correct.
Correct.
Well, not, it's not the city's responsibility.
Right, and, and there are specific deadlines in that contract, correct? The VAST is-
Yeah, so we have a ninety-nine point nine-nine percent uptime guarantee, which will mean we have a four-hour response time for anything. And a certain way, yes, we're based in Fresno, so all of our construction team, all of our spencers, they're all based in Fresno. So they can be here within twenty minutes. We'll have more likely identified it from where the city or even Reggie knows because of the greater passing of the network. So we'll set teams up.
Reggie, can you paraphrase that please for, um, those that are watching on Facebook? Because I don't know if they could hear from-
Uh, so VAST was, uh, saying that, uh, they're based out of Fresno and they have teams that have, uh, that have a four-hour response window, but most likely it's twenty minutes for them to get here from Fresno. Uh, additionally to that, they are actively monitoring the network and they would probably notice an outage before customers or myself or the city or anybody else would notice it, they would, they would have aware of that. And then to also emphasize that, we have our own management system within that, that I get text messages alerts, our rest of our team gets them. Um, so we, we're notified very quickly if, if a particular access point goes out or, or anything along those lines too. So it's all actively monitored and, yep.
Thank you. So when there are local site issues and there are things happening with the network, their commitment is to be on top of that? Like we don't have to file a ticket to get there?
No, if it, if it's going to be a, if it's a, a significant outage that's affecting multiple customers, we're going to be aware of it. And, uh, most likely we will have already sent a text message or an email to those customers, letting them know that we are aware of it. Uh, it's part of our, part of our system is to provide them that automatic feedback because then it's not a phone call we have to, we have to answer. Um, and then they know we're already working on it, so it saves them from making the phone call.
I have more.
Sure.
Who controls your rates? How do you determine how much you're going to charge people?
Well, it's the good old fashioned profit and loss, uh, uh, area. We look at what does it cost us to be in business, uh, what is our bandwidth that we also have to purchase? What are our other contracts, insurance, all those good things of running a business? Uh, what do they cost? And then that's, that's basically where we divide out our rates. I, we also, like I mentioned before, are really in this business to make it possible for everyone. Um, and it's not just, uh, how much money can we make? It's how much money do we need to make is what we look at, um, when, when it comes to rate setting. Uh, we, we were rea- originally kind of founded on a co-op-ing idea of those that can pay were the ones that paid and those that couldn't pay weren't, weren't really charged as much. And, um, a lot of our customers are still in that mindset, um, and that's kind of what we built it on. And we have customers that are like, I, I don't mind paying more if that means somebody else doesn't have to pay, um, that can't afford it, so.
Do you have programs in place right now that reduce rates for people?
We do, yes.
Can you give me some examples of those?
We, we-
Just types of rate?
Sure, w- so we have the affordable build, affordable connectivity program, uh, with the FCC, uh, we're part of that. We are also-
What does that mean?
That means that's a thirty dollar discount for anybody that basically receives federal assistance. Um, is the easiest way to describe it, whether it's social security, um, Medicare, um, all of those things, right? Uh, there's a lot of programs out there, you guys probably know more of them than I do. But, um, that's, that's probably the main one, that's a recent addition for us, it's not something we've had for a, a long time. Um, it's a newer program, it was spawned out of the, uh, broadband connectivity program, can't remember what it was, the one that came out during the pandemic. Um, yeah, the, that one and then, so this program hasn't been around super long, um, so it's kind of new. A lot of people that were part of the other program were automatically transferred into the new one, just basically changed names and the amount of money that offsets it went down. Um, so we're, we're part of that one already, um, and I, I don't know a good way to describe it, but we're, we're part of the, the community program. Um, and it's, again, meeting people where they, where they are. And I, we have conversations with people where we'll ask, hey, can you, you want to help this family out? Um, they, they need some help and, and it could be anything from, it's not necessarily internet services, it could be their stu-, their, their college kid needs a laptop and we'll go help them find a laptop, um, help them source that, the technology needs that are there. Uh, so that's probably our biggest program that we're part of is, I'm going to call it the community and Kingsburg's really good at that, really good.
You said thirty dollars for your affordability rate plan?
Mm-hmm.
Thirty dollars off of what number?
That, that's the thirty dollar offset, uh, so it pays, uh, the federal government reimburses us thirty dollars off of any plan that we have that's qualifying plan. There are a lot of intricacies as to what qualifies, all of the plans that we're going to offer under this program do qualify. Um, one of the, one of the benefits we're going to have here is, is symmetrical speeds, so your up and down speeds are going to be the same. Um, that really helps with video conferencing, with working from home, with being able to, you know, upload pictures and, and all those things, upload assignments, um, everything that comes with that. Um, one other program that we're part of also is the, uh, uh, teleconnect, uh, program. It's a state-run program that offsets bandwidth costs. So they offset bandwidth costs directly to us, they actually pay our provider instead. So VAST would get the check and as a, and return our rate, they pay part, or that pays part of our bill. Um, and that, that applies to certain things, uh, like where we're providing bandwidth to, say a library, um, a community center, um, schools, uh, anything that qualifies within that, uh, realm of, um, helping people connect to the internet.
Those are all, because I know part of the contract is basically saying your books are going to be wide open to us.
Certainly.
Um, I don't know how that's exactly structured, but it sounds like we'll have pretty free access to their books anytime we need to audit it. Is that correct? To make sure that-
Yeah.
If you're pulling a significantly higher profit, but those savings aren't getting passed along to the customers, that's, as we sit up here, that's a little bit of our concern.
Oh, definitely.
So I, I did want to bring up the full audit capabilities that we're going to have, because that's- that's important when we're talking about a loan of this size, to me.
And we're a 501(c)(3) anyways, so when we file our 990 every year, it's right there on the website for anybody to pull. They can see how much we spent on electricity and how much we spent on lunch, what have you, anything that's listed within our expenses. Yep.
I don't have anything else, sorry.
Good. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I think the only ones left in the back row are VAST, if you want to, if you have anything for public comment.
Paul Beasley. Thank you, Council, thank you, staff. My name is Frank Ortiz. I'm the Regional Sales Manager for VAST. I'm a little familiar with Comcast. Nothing negative to say. I worked there for eight years. I was the Director of the Business Segment, both in the Bay Area and in the Central Valley. I'm from Clovis. Once again, Agri, second cutest downtown. What I want to speak to is a little bit about the support. Going from where I was at Comcast, I've been with VAST now for two and a half years. We have our own construction crews. All the infrastructure is ours. There's over 3 million students using our network on a daily basis. One of the biggest challenges that we had was we were kind of the best-kept secret in town. A lot of the municipalities, a lot of the state organizations, Fresno County Office of Education, a lot of the universities, Fresno State, they're all powered by us. But a lot of our commercial segments and some of our city programs didn't know about us. So when it comes to response times, as Reggie mentioned, we have our own crews. We have other customers on the network as well. So it won't be a responsibility of Kingsburg to let us know. We have alarms going off. As Reggie mentioned, we'll know about the hit immediately. And immediately, it's, you know, short of EMT, our crews are running once we identify what's going on. So from that perspective, Reggie came to us and said, hey, I've got a project. This is something that I want to do. Do you have the infrastructure? We'd work together. And we said, sure, we'd love to partner and love to help. So from that perspective, the service that we provide to Reggie, who in turn provides it to you, has the standard SLAs that we would on any of our large agreements. Knowing that we're a little bit different, and this is probably the last point that I want to share with you, a lot of the Verizon Towers, a lot of the T-Mobile Towers, a lot of the AT&amp;T Towers, Fresno Housing Authority, one of the challenges that they faced was the ability to rebroadcast, Fresno Housing Authority as an example. Some agreements, and I just, you know, I'm not going to, this isn't a pick on Comcast, I enjoyed my time there. The other large providers have strict restrictions on what they can do with that bandwidth. But because we're kind of a play with everybody, we do business with Comcast, we do business with AT&amp;T, we do not have restrictions on what you do with the bandwidth. And that's why it allows companies like Reggie to work with us a little bit better. We're not as restrictive. We're based out of Fresno. We've been around for 13 years now, so we're not a startup. We've got close to 35, you know, 100 miles of fiber throughout California, all the way from the fire country, you know, down south up to Bakersfield. We're from San Francisco to One Wilshire, which are data centers. So we're pretty expansive in our coverage and our ability to handle the service. So those are kind of the things that I just wanted to share with the Council, maybe fill in some gaps there on what we're going to bring and the support that we have. Reggie's been a great partner of ours. He's actually helping us on another project in another community. And he's already deployed and his, they're extremely happy with what he's done. And so we've, we've got a level of experience. And when it comes to the timeframes of the construction, once we have the plans designed, we'll be able to give a firm con, you know, kind of schedule of when we'll be able to complete it. But the timeframes that are being thrown around are not unreasonable and are not optimistic. They're realistic. And I'll turn it over to Adam, who works directly with Reggie.
Yeah, good evening. Couple of familiar faces. I'm pretty involved in the community with a number of our different programs. I'm a Kingsburg resident. I work for VAST now, work out of Fresno. I work full-time from home. I'm also a Comcast customer. I worked for Comcast for six years before I went over to VAST in probably late 2020. Some of the challenges, just to, one of the reasons I moved to VAST is because of the local operating procedures. They give us the flexibility to actually complete construction and get people services that they need. And some of the challenges of why I actually left Comcast's business department was because of the challenges in getting things built. And that is the honest-to-God truth, and that's why I'm over with VAST now. And when I was at Comcast, I had reached out to Reggie a couple of times. Unfortunately, I wasn't his account manager, so we weren't allowed to help him out at that point. So when I came to VAST, I saw a pretty unique opportunity to help the community from another provider being in town, because right now you have basically AT&amp;T residential and Comcast residential in town, and then business services where you can get it. We have the flexibility to work with him on any of his needs. We're going to support fully, you know, we're going to take care of the network for whatever you guys need. I live here in town. You can call me all the time and I can get ahold of somebody immediately, even on basic stuff, right? You know, if you have questions for Reggie and you're not able to get ahold of them, I'm happy to answer questions as well. So just being in town, there's a need for it. This project will provide symmetrical bandwidth to every resident who wants it. And that's important from the standpoint like Frank was saying and Reggie was saying. When you offer a one-gig download speed with not a very high upload speed, that's great for watching shows and pulling bandwidth to your house. But if you're working from home or doing schoolwork from home, it's a challenge to upload files or documents, things like that. And that's what that, the symmetrical bandwidth will offer you guys. And other than that, I mean, I think it's a really innovative project that we've, that we've come up in partnership with him. And just being in the community, I'm going to be fully on board with helping advertise it and getting it out there as well. So we're here for your, your support and taking care of the network to back him up. And if anything ever happens to him, we will fully support, step in and handle that and make sure everything's honored in that agreement to help you guys out.
And that's part of the contract, correct?
Yep.
If Kingsburg Media Foundation, for example, completely goes in, or, sorry, Reggie?
Yeah.
We just want to make sure that our dollars are not lost.
Yeah, it's great.
We work with multiple partners. And once again, this isn't an all-or-nothing situation. Competition is great. I've heard that a lot. And I think, you know, it's still open for another provider. If Comcast wants to come with another provider and offer a competitive service, they're open to do that. This isn't an exclusive one-time, you know, similar to, you know, school bids where you have that. This is just a business coming and saying we can provide a service. So Comcast is more than welcome to use their partners to come in with a program that creates competitive, because then that'll keep us, Reggie on his toes as far as that. So, yeah, but we will step in and help provide a, we'll keep it running until a reasonable alternative or solution is established.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other questions for them? Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we close public comment, is there anybody else that wants to come up or come up for a second time? Come on back up, dial back.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Just because, golly, that was a rough one for Comcast. All right, well, I have some familiarity with utility skilled businesses. I worked at PG&E after leaving politics. It's tough being a big provider and they are not without blame. Just quickly, though, kind of apples to something else. I mean, a nonprofit organization obviously has different motivations. I'll tell you some of the language, it's not surprising. If it was this easy, it's kind of crazy. I mean, VAST seems great. I mean, it sounds like in Kingsburg, you yell at the window and they show up at your house. It seems a little too good to be true, but what I, what I would ask is if the Council is willing, put this on Comcast. If, if the gentleman with Kingsburg, with the nonprofit, put it on Comcast to make that, to make right by that. And, and we may find that between VAST and, and the nonprofit, they, that Comcast is not competitive and that this is a program that will rely heavily on government money and the private, a pure private sector approach is not right and that's not a good fit, and that's perfectly fine. All we ask tonight is a little bit of time to hold Comcast accountable and have them do that work. It seems really, it seems too good to be true. I mean, most businesses like, you know, energy providers and telecoms are huge and slow and not terribly responsive. Maybe VAST Solutions and this nonprofit has solved that problem and that's really exciting for them. I would just ask, we get a little bit of time to put our best foot forward and then maybe this project advances as is. Yeah. So, thank you.
Do you have any questions before he walked away? No? No, okay. Anyone else from the public that would like to give comment? That's okay.
I do apologize.
Okay.
I don't want to take any more of your time.
You're good.
This is a big decision, so take our time.
Understandable. Too good to be true. City of Orange Cove, City of Parlor, I could start rattling off some other cities where we do that. That's the flexibility. I've had the unique opportunity of being in both sides. So one thing that we've prided ourselves on is not overcommitting, is not saying that we're going to do something and not execute. Our turnover rate of customers that have left us is minuscule, in the 1% since we've started 12 years ago. So if you call a customer 12 years ago that signed up with VAST, today they're still a customer. And that type of loyalty doesn't happen if we don't keep our word or if we don't do what we're going to say we're going to do. Once again, I have the utmost respect for Comcast. I appreciated my time there. So please, don't take this as us against them, right? We work with them all the time. But in this unique situation, we wouldn't commit to something that we couldn't execute on. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Sorry, I had one more thought I wanted to share when we're talking about waiting to make this decision. This, this can go forward and we can start this process. And Comcast is more than welcome to come in and do their own thing also. This, as the agreement says, is not an exclusive, exclusive option. If Comcast wants to come and build the same thing and they're going to do it through the private sector, that, as far as I know, there's nothing stopping them other than the permit process, which I won't comment, I can't comment on. But we welcome the competition and we're, to also reiterate the timeline part of it, we started conversations with another community of 250 homes. Conversation started about four months ago and by November, we'll have internet connections to all 250 of those homes. It's already, it's already happening that fast. So we'll, we'll have those connections in place. So yes, it is, yes, it does sound too good to be true and I'm a skeptic a lot of times on those things, but I can speak from experience. It's, it's reasonable and it's realistic. And I'm not going to do something I don't want to do at the expense of my family or my own time off, too. So we do plan accordingly for those things. So, thank you.
Any one else for public comment before we close it? Okay, we are going to close public comments and now we will bring it to Council discussion.
Yes, I just have a question for our City Attorney, Mike Nolan. Does this have to go out to the public bid?
It's a loan.
No, this is, this isn't a public works project.
Okay.
If we, as Alex pointed out, we're not going to, other than providing the, you know, some of the funds to, that are going to be loaned and allowing, and allowing the use of our right-of-way, the city doesn't own anything. And it's not providing a service.
Gotcha.
So it's not like garbage collection or it's not like paving our streets or doing things of that nature. It's not a public, it's not a work of public, it's not a public project that would require us to go out to bid because it has nothing to do with the city. It's just, it's a private organization providing services to citizens.
Service, okay.
And the reason for the agreement is just for us to be able to address those issues to ensure that it's done properly and correctly. So.
Okay, thank you.
Who wants to go next?
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is a huge project and it's a ton of money. You know, the financial aspect is my biggest concern, our liabilities with that. And, you know, I've been in conversation about this project for six, eight months now. And all of these concerns are, in my opinion, they're alleviated as best as they legally can be in this contract. I know the contract is a long document. I know that it's very confusing. But there's a lot of redundancies and there is a lot of language in there that protects our dollars as best we can. There's no debate that there is somewhat of a risk with this. But it's backed in ways with, with VAST coming on board, we really eliminate the local element of fallout. If we were to lose the local provider of Kingsburg Media Foundation, we have VAST, which is a larger company, that can step in. That was the biggest concern for me. And then the take rate was a concern for me. You know, coming up with what numbers are going to be appropriate for that take rate for the city, I think ultimately, long-term, what that's, what that take rate is really going to do is it's going to allow us to be in a position to negotiate things in the future. And I don't know if Comcast, no matter how long we give you, you're going to be able to go to your board and determine a take rate that is negotiable with the city. That, I think, is my, my big concern about Comcast. And, you know, Mr. Eslick, I love your take on it, I do. And I think you're doing a great job representing Comcast. I just think Comcast is just too late in the game, really. You know, you've had these programs in place for 11 years, yet we've never heard from you. You've been in town for even longer and yet you haven't presented anything remotely close to this to benefit the citizens. Now an organization has and you wanted to attach to it and say, hey, delay, delay this, which sounds like a simple thing, hey, just delay it. Just give us a chance. You've had years of chance, in my opinion. It's not a bid, so we can go out in a different manner with this, with the loan process. But I think when we say delay, that delay is going to delay the entire project, which means citizens are going to pay more money for a longer time. And that's really where the delay, you know, everybody says there's no harm in the delay. Well, there is, because all of the people that could have this service at a cheaper rate are going to continue to pay. So that's, that's my concern with the delay. I like the rate setting by locals. Kingsburg Media Foundation is going to set the rate. It's not going to be made by a corporate board. That's a big thing to me. We have two people here in front of us that are local businessmen that live here in town that you see every day. So if they're not providing a good service, they're going to have to live with that from the community. And I think there's a level of accountability there that we don't have with Comcast or any of the other ones, which, again, like we said, they're welcome to come and provide the same service if they, if they can. But I think if they were capable of doing it, we would have it already. A big thing for me is supporting the local business. And I think that this is a great opportunity to work in a partnership with a local nonprofit to give Kingsburg a program that really doesn't exist like this elsewhere. We're talking about providing internet throughout the entire town with fiber speeds in a very short amount of time. That's, it's a great project. I, it's a little bit of a gamble. It's going to cost a lot of money, but we put this out to the citizens through the ARPA survey and they said, this is what we want. They want us to move forward with a fiber infrastructure project. And I think this is the right project for that. I just want the cheapest, fastest, most reliable internet for everybody in the town is what it comes down to. And from what we've looked at, this, this seems like the right option for me.
I've seen it on the student end. And the kids of Kingsburg deserve something great so that they can do their work and do it in a way where they can upload documents, not have issues. We've always been about supporting local. We've said, we've said that a lot. We've said it through the pandemic. Just to piggyback on what you said, this is going to support our local businesses because they're going to have possibly a cheaper, faster option with the fiber. We're going to be marketable with new businesses, maybe bigger businesses coming in. I also like the idea of supporting Kingsburg Media Foundation, local nonprofit business that has given back a lot to our community, especially during the pandemic. We saw it, Traver Kids, different town, but they go into our high school. They're our kids. Many other ways also. And... And I foresee the Kingsburg model. Kingsburg Media Foundation slash VAST slash Kingsburg City Model being a model for surrounding cities. I think it's a good model. And I think that we're not going to get a take rate with Comcast. I don't see how for revenue sharing, I think we can get discounts. But I don't see how we can get that. And for our future as a city, just looking at revenue, building up what we need in the future, this is a great option to be able to have that take rate. And the last thing is, I like that Reggie can meet people where they are. Instead of having a big corporate board at Comcast deciding what rates need to be, he knows our citizens, he can meet with Ida at KCAPS and, and help somebody that can't afford it and make decisions that need to be made where it's not just like a cookie cutter plan. Those are just my thoughts.
As Kingsburg local as possible. Also, the, we have so many seniors in town that are on a fixed rate, fixed income.
Income, yeah.
I think that's a concern. We've been talking about that for a while now on different things. And also with our build out here, I think we're going to have more families and, you know, with, we don't want to use the recession word, but I'm going to use it. You know, we're going into that and we have more and more families that are going to be looking at ways to cut costs as much as possible. So, you know, we need internet, whether it's for work or for schoolwork or for anything that, you know, we do nowadays, we need that. So any way that we can cut costs as much as possible, if we can keep as local as possible.
I, I think it is a win for all moving forward with this proposal tonight. Because we, if we pass this, Comcast still has the opportunity and any other provider, quite frankly, any other corporate entity has the opportunity to continue those discounted plans, those discounted rates. And that's not going away. So I don't see if like we're doing this, all of the other services are leaving. It is a gamble. I do, my only hesitation is that this will come back if not working correctly for a lot of our constituents. If it isn't fast enough, if it isn't delivering what we said it was going to deliver, the city did stamp their approval on it because it is our money. And as much as we think the, and I do say, I do think it will, the pressure will come to the Kingsburg Media Foundation and VAST. It will also come back to us. So we need to be, right. Right. So city staff and council members need to be fully prepared to take that load of support on as well and have the, and from the get-go, the understanding be that if you're having those issues, we just, we're not involved in that process. It's like the communication around it. So we do do that communication, ensuring that it's very clear to our constituents who the support will be for this because it will come back on us. But other than that, I think it's exciting. I appreciate council member Persino, you brought this up a while ago. So I appreciate you for that. And it's a win for all of our constituents.
That's good. Hopefully Comcast will come in, AT&amp;T and the others will come in. It's a good thing that they have options though.
Right.
Not that everybody will be on this plan, but, you know, this is options. This will be another way that they'll have something in. I hope Comcast will come in as well and bring in all these different programs that you said you guys have too. I think it's going to be great as well.
It's a big ask from Comcast for sure.
Yeah.
Especially with this loan, we're looking to get back $375,000 in interest in our loan guaranteed. I mean, that's something to figure out with, you know, potentially take rates with 1,000 customers of $18,750 a month. That's bringing money in. So I know that's, that's a big bill, but I mean, we're kind of setting the bar tonight with what we'd like to see to truly be competitive.
Yeah, this is a big decision for us. But the citizens have asked for it, you know, in the survey. So it's needed here in Kingsburg. And my only concern is that it's a subscriber, you know, account receivable. So I think advertisement is going to be, you know, something we definitely need to do and be good at it, so. And I, same thing, I encourage, you know, Comcast or anybody to come in and, you know, competition is good.
That's a lot.
Yeah. Was a lot of good information and needed answers. Okay, so next is action as deemed necessary. Don't know if I should wait for council member. So we have under recommended action by city council. Abby, can you pull that up so that we can see it up here, please?
It was a long discussion.
It's long, so I want to make sure we all can see it. So right here, we have recommended actions. And this is all as one motion, correct? A and B, two? Two. Okay, so staff is seeking discussion and direction from us on two different items. The first one is to approve the proposed development and operating agreement with the Kingsburg Media Foundation for the purposes of installing and operating a fiber optic network subject to execution of the agreement by Kingsburg Media Foundation. Final agreements with CVN slash VAST Networks. Final city approval of the system design agreements and necessary permitting. And any other actions determined necessary by the city manager, city attorney, or the city engineer. So that is A, if we want to make, if someone wants to make a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And B is to approve the proposed side letter with CVIN, VAST Networks, in case of default and direct the city manager and the city attorney to negotiate the terms of a formal agreement with CVIN slash VAST Networks regarding long-term responsibilities. I will need a motion for that.
I'll make that motion.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I feel like I want to clap. Okay. I do too, I need to find my spot. Okay. 6.3 is our TOD program agreement, staff report and presentation by city engineer, Dave Peters.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Back in January, Fresno COG initiated the cycle 10 of their Measure C Transit Oriented Development Program Call for Projects. The city responded to that call with a grant application for Phase 1 of the city's downtown Kingsburg Strategic Plan, which consists of pedestrian bicycle facility improvements in the downtown area. We submitted that application in February. Just want to give you a brief, can you bring that up, Gabby? I just want to give you a brief refresher, sure. On what those improvements, which improvements were included in the grant application. So again, it's bike lanes on Draper Street from California Street all the way up to Sierra Street. And then curb extensions at four intersections along Lewis Street. So the curb extensions will look like this, they'll be similar to the ones that are down in the downtown area. They'll shorten the crossing distance and make pedestrian access more, more available for citizens walking in the area. And then the bike lanes, we presented this once before, the bike lanes would be along Draper. This is just one short section of how those, how those might be configured. So we'll bring the designs before you again, before we go out to bid. But I just wanted to remind you what was included in the grant. This is an expert out of the FHWA manual, so this is, this is something that's done frequently in different communities. And we even have the configuration currently on Lewis Streets. We did that back in 2009, so we've been working pretty well, so. One thing that we are going to look at is potentially doing some enhanced bike lanes, maybe with some green type. Yeah, so that will really delineate that area for the bicyclists and enhance safety. So again, we'll bring those, bring those designs back before you, before we go out to bid. On March, we did receive a notice that we received $396,165 in program funds to fund the project. So tonight, we're asking you to adopt a resolution approving the standard agreement and authorizing the city manager to execute that agreement so we can get started with the project. So happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Much needed downtown because how many times have you been on the sidewalks and people try to ride a bike on the sidewalk downtown or skateboard? Definitely needed. And our downtown, you know, our streets are wide enough for these as well. And then in Sweden, these are very common. And especially the colored like that are very common. To have a color like that too, just saying.
I still have concerns over the design right behind backing out cars. I'll just, I still have that concern. But we can talk about that another.
The new rage is back in angle parking with that, so we can have that discussion later if you want to.
Wait. We will have that discussion.
That's why I didn't bring it up.
Tonight, we're just talking about the grant. Any other council discussion on this?
No.
Okay, any public comment on this item? Nope. Okay, I'll close public comment, bring it back to council. And so the recommended action by city council that we have before us is to adopt Resolution 2022-044 to execute the application, the standard agreement, and all other documents required by the Fresno Council of Governments.
Make that motion. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next item. 6.4 Crime Statistics Report for the month of July 2022 and General Police Department Update. The report was prepared by Kingsburg Police Department Record Supervisor Karina Padilla. And our presentation, presentation tonight is by Police Chief Neil Dadian.
Thank you, Mayor North, and good evening to you, members of the council. Short report tonight, good news, catalytic converter thefts are down. Bad news, vehicle burglaries are up.
They went for the whole.
Just trying to catch a break. But, you know, we're, we're working those. I want to, I want to bring to your attention, unusual burglar investigation occurred. And this is, again, not normal, a little outside the ordinary, but something that I really want to bring to light. A husband and wife crime team posted a Facebook ad for handyman services. A resident in Kingsburg hired the husband and wife team to help with remodeling the interior of her home. While working out the residence in Kingsburg, the two suspects took the homeowner's checkbook, wrote several fraudulent checks to themselves. The homeowner received a call from her bank, alerted her, she contacted the police. Officers and detectives made the arrest of the male subject in, at the residence in Kingsburg while he was working. And then that day served a search warrant at a motel in Fresno where he and the other suspect were living. So we arrested the female suspect, his wife in the hotel room, recovered the checkbook, stolen computer, also located some fentanyl, drug paraphernalia, and said other things. And both of them were booked and cases at the DA's office. But what this is, is a good reminder about scams. They come in so many different ways, shapes, forms. I mean, I got, what's it, five, six phone calls today. Unbelievably, my car warranty is due again. You know? And my social security needs updating, my medical card needs replacing. I mean, just all kinds of scams, right? This was just one that was a little bit unusual for us here, so I wanted to bring that to light. And we're going to try and do some social media things so that we can, you know, help our citizens kind of avoid some of these things. Other than that, we had a pretty quiet month. We did have a stabbing yesterday, 10th and Sierra Street. Short version of that was, honestly, two boyfriends, one girlfriend, had some meth, shake it up. Didn't work out. Loser went to the hospital, winner went to jail. Kind of the way it is. But I know it's out there on social media, so I thought I'd bring it to your attention. We have one officer on field training. He's due out mid-September, two police recruits in the academy. I'm just going to continue to update you guys on that one. We do have recruitment out for three vacancies. So that's, you know, again, good news, bad news. The good news is we have the vacancies because of additional positions. The bad news is we're competing with everybody else to find bodies. We did submit our grant application today for the Prop 56 Tobacco Funds. So, yeah, that funds our SRO. And all we did was duplicate what we previously had. Thank you again, Mayor North, for that template and so hopefully we'll be successful.
And share how you were able to submit it this time.
Oh, yeah.
Last time we missed it, like?
We did it on time this time?
Was it email, fax?
Yeah. That was it. Had to email it.
And last time you drove it to Sacramento, correct?
Yeah, because UPS.
Messed up the other one?
Didn't make it. So, so the first one we applied, we, I think we had two or three days.
Two days and it was overnight service. They didn't let you submit it via email.
Correct.
It wasn't us just feeding them to have a hard copy, that was our option.
So we waited a year and then I personally drove it to Sacramento and I gave it to somebody's hands and I took his name down and I had it timestamped. I wasn't going to miss out on that. I mentioned last time that we had, one of our officers has signed to the adult compliance team. He was out on an injury for his knee on the, on the job injury. He had surgery, that went well, and he's back on light duty to the adult compliance team. So very hopeful for his recovery and it looks good. We have two officers away certifying, recertifying on defensive tactics and de-escalation training. We're focused heavily on de-escalation. Both as a profession and locally, because, you know, our uses of force are minimal. I mean, they're almost non, it doesn't even gather a pulse. We average about three uses of force, reportable uses of force a year. That's almost nothing in law enforcement. And so, you know, the officers are doing a really good job at de-escalating and I want to continue on with that. I am happy to report that I'll be sending four female employees to the Women's, Women, Women Leaders in Law Enforcement next month in Anaheim. That's sponsored by the California Police Chiefs Association, yeah. So really happy to do that. First time we've had the opportunity to send like, you know, a handful. And I hope to continue to do that because it's an ongoing conference. And it really gets a lot of positive feedback from attendees. So we'll continue down that road. And also looking forward to introducing to council some new employees promoted over the last few months and some new employees hired. And over the next couple of months, I look forward to doing that. End of my report, happy to answer any questions.
Any council questions?
Really quickly, the Prop 56 for the SRO, that still is going to be covered until we find out?
Yeah, so. No, our grant. I'm sorry, what?
I just said we got an extra year.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, yes. So that times out the end of this fiscal year. So this hopefully will, will get noticed prior to that. Although they do take, they have in the past, they've taken a long time now.
Question for sure is I would, I would hate to see, you know, a gap before we find out.
We've actually established some pretty good relationships there. So we actually have, you know, people to call at DOJ now who are actually responsive and they will return our emails. Actually responsive and they will return our emails and phone calls, so. I hope to, you know. Be in the loop a little bit better this time.
Absolutely. Awesome, thank you.
We've seen a lot of your officers with the start of school, um, at the campuses, around the campuses, so I just want to say thanks for that.
Certainly.
Good, real good presence at the schools, especially at pick-up and drop-off times, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Nice dab of presence in general, so that's.
Thank you, chief.
Any other questions?
Thank you for turning on the fans as well.
You're welcome.
That did not go unnoticed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Best department, thank you.
Next, we have item six point five, voting delegates of the twenty twenty-two Annual League of City, California City Conference. Staff report and presentation by city clerk, Abigail Pelsgard.
Oh, you're supposed to, oh, gotcha. Accidentally gave it to you. Hello, Mayor North, members of council. As you know, the Cal Cities twenty twenty-two Annual Conference and Expo scheduled for September seventh through the ninth in Long Beach. An important part of the annual conference is the annual business meeting. It is on Friday, September ninth. At this meeting, Cal Cities membership considers and acts on resolutions and establishes Cal City policies. In order to vote at the annual business meeting, council must designate a voting delegate. You must, you may also appoint two alternate voting delegates. And this is an action item, I didn't put this in there, so we would need a motion for this.
Any questions? Okay, council discussion?
Just have to choose, right?
Mayor, Mayor Proton?
Yeah, I guess I'll be fine.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That was an easy one, Abby. Okay, the next, um, item that we have is item seven, council reports. Item seven point one, Community Services Commission, nothing to report. Seven point two, Public Safety Committee.
We met, uh, last Monday. Officer Kroger gave us a. Update, crime update to our, our members and they were happy to hear the crime update. Cause I'm sure they don't listen to the council meeting. All of them don't listen, you know, to chief's update, um. We discussed, uh, where our funds might go when we get our funds. Next, for the, the next year, fiscal year for. And we're going to continue that discussion. And then, um. I brought up, uh, I had been speaking with, a couple of weeks ago, I spoke with. Detective Dean, um, Cardinelli from the Fresno Police Department. And, um, Lisa Smith, council office. And I was requiring about, uh, fentanyl education and awareness. And, um, so I brought that up in other businesses that are in our meeting Monday. And the community members were all in favor of. Me reaching out to our high school and our junior high school about fentanyl, uh, education and awareness. And so they voted yes, they all voted for me to reach out to the high school and the junior high, Rayford Johnson, and. The high school replied back, they, they do want the education over there, so I, um. Emailed, uh, Lisa Smith camp's, Smith camp's office back and, um. I talked to Mr. Phelan yesterday and they've already, he, he's got their email, so that's a good thing for Kingsburg, the student, the high school students. And I haven't heard back from the junior high yet, so. I'm going to reach out to them again. Uh, tomorrow, the next day. I called them a couple of times, but they haven't got back to me yet on that, so. But, uh, that's my report. Yeah.
Seven point three, um, Chamber of Commerce.
Uh, met last Tuesday, I think, um. Upcoming at the seventeenth is the crayfish festival, September seventeenth.
Oh, shoot.
Um, other than that, they're just working on some internal bylaws and things.
Thank you. Seven point four, Economic Development.
We have not met.
Seven point five, Finance Committee.
Have not met.
Seven point six, Planning Commission. Um, we had a joint meeting last week, um. I guess nothing to report out because we were all there workshop. Seven point seven, um, SKGSA.
Uh, nothing to report.
Seven point eight, Downtown Business Improvement District.
Also nothing to report.
Seven point nine, Council, Council of Governments.
Nothing to report out because we have not met.
Seven point ten, um, any council reports?
This is going quick.
Any council reports?
I went on, uh, August fourth, which is the day after our last meeting, I went to the Kingsburg Task Force meeting that we were invited to. Alex joined me as well. Um, so that was a, a meeting with lots of different, um, I guess we call entities from. Uh, different members of the community, from churches to, um, chamber. Um, so we shared out what was going on with the council, things that we were working on, um. Just shared out, just listened to what everyone was doing and how we could all work together. Police, fire were there as well and. Shared out with, uh, what everyone was working on, how we could all be working together. And then, um, that following Monday, I went to the senior center board meeting. Also to share out things that we were working on and tell them that they have their, um. Their bus shelters will be coming soon and so they were very excited about that and to update them on some other things that will be going on, so. Just things that I went to. That's it for me.
Anyone else? Just wanted to mention, I noticed the striping around the schools and they look, it looks really good. Seven point eleven, City Managers Report.
Uh, yes, it's a couple of items. So, uh, obviously on your agenda tonight, you see, just a reminder about the cancellation of the, uh, September seventh regular meeting. Actually, we'll be at the League of Cities. Um, a couple other items, uh, we are planning to put out to bid the Rapid Flash and Beacon Project for Roosevelt, uh, next week. So we were hoping to do kind of all of them at the same time, but, uh, the other ones are on two oh one and Caltrans is, uh. A part of that, and so it's going to take a little longer, so we're going to get going on the, on the one in front of Roosevelt. Uh, Stone Plaza, uh, poured, uh, their foundation, uh, this morning at about three AM, so, uh, because of the heat, so. Uh, they're, they're moving along, um, so, uh, probably saw they've delivered a handful of their materials and lumber, uh, to the property across from the train depot, the empty lot. Uh, next to the police department, so hopefully we'll be seeing. Uh, sticks in the air pretty soon. And then, um, the Swedish Mill, they've been continuing with their, uh, demolition inside the building, cleaning out and doing everything there. But they also submitted, uh, further site plan review today, so, uh, that, that project is, is moving along, um, so, uh, excited to get that going. Uh, and then, um, the last item, uh, for the council is, is, um. Because Councilmember Palomar, uh, is running unopposed. Um, there is the ability to, uh, essentially have the council appoint him and Lou, uh, which would save the city, um, between two and four thousand dollars. Um, having to do that election since there's, um, no one running against him, but, uh, we have to, um. Council has to do that by, uh, August twenty-fifth, which is next Thursday. Uh, and we have to, uh, that's a Fresno County requirement and we have to notice it in the paper, which means we have to let the paper know tomorrow, which will, will go in on Wednesday, so. Uh, probably Wednesday of next week is when we would have to hold a special, uh, special meeting, um, to, uh, have the council make that consideration. So we'll be, um, if that's something that, uh, council wants to do, uh, please, uh, let us know and then we'll, we'll work on that and, uh, finalize those times for, for that special meeting next week.
Saving the city money at least.
Absolutely.
Definitely, yeah, definitely.
That will keep you.
Yeah, definitely.
Will you let us know the time of that? Or do we need to coordinate that?
Well, yeah, we, we can chat to make sure everybody's available so that we were, we notice it correctly in the paper, so.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you. And under item number eight, future agenda items, we have none listed. So item number nine, adjourn the regular city, um, council meeting.